Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is April 26, 2017. We are holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you for coming today. The order of today's meeting will include the audit update, the financial update, we'll have public participation, and then we will adjourn. As always, I'd like to remind everyone that courteous behavior is both desired and expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us into the plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Monday, April 24, 2017, at least 48 hours before this meeting at boardroom, principal office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on cpsboe.org. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance and Audit Committee meeting of Wednesday, April 26, 2017, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
A member, Father Garanzini.
Present.
And President Clark.
Here.
For members, there is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our CEO, Forrest Claypool, and our general counsel, Ron Marmar. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's begin with the first presentation.
Good morning, board members. My name is Andrel Holloway. I'm the chief internal auditor here at Chicago Public Schools, and I'd like to provide you with an update on audit activities over the last quarter. The first thing I'd like to highlight today are ongoing internal audit activities, and what you see in front of you is a list of those activities. The first two items, I want to preface the overview by saying that these are regular, cyclical type of audits. These are audits that you would expect an organization to perform every so often, every two to three years, and we have not performed a detailed procurement audit or payroll audit, at least in the last couple of years, so we felt it was prudent for us to do that at this point in time. Both audits are focused on looking at the effectiveness of internal controls over each of these processes. With regard to procurement, we're looking at things such as purchase orders, solicitations, and vendor management. With regard to payroll, we're looking at things such as time reporting, time collection by employees, employee payments, payroll checks, withholdings, and third-party remittances, which could include things such as tax remittances, garnishments, and other deductions. The other thing that's ongoing, and we've reported this to the board in the past, we're in phase two and closing out very soon, here is the option schools attendance audit. And then finally, you'll hear a little bit about this today, is the absenteeism compliance audit activity that we're undertaking as well right now. There's actually one other thing. We'll give you a brief school audit update. What I'd like to start here highlighting are some of the completed audit activities that we've done. What I highlighted a moment ago were ongoing activities. One completed activity is what we call a cyber diagnostic. This is an IT-focused audit. This is an audit where we have not performed a rather detailed internal audit in at least the two years that I've been here. And so what we thought we would do is start by looking at our cybersecurity posture here at CPS and understanding how well are we performing from an IT perspective related to a nationally-aligned maturity model? And that maturity model that we compared ourselves to is the National Institute of Standards and Technology cybersecurity framework, and it looks at a number of areas across the IT infrastructure, such as leadership and governance, human factors, IT risk management, and compliance and audit among other items. One thing that I want to make sure that I provide for perspective is the footprint here from an IT perspective at CPS. We have 36,000 employees roughly, 500-plus district-run schools, and nearly 400,000 students in a variety of devices, such as laptops, handheld devices, tablets, cellphones, et cetera. And IT, the IT organization here at CPS is responsible for maintaining all of that infrastructure, covering all of those locations and all of those employees. So what I'm really getting at here is it's a tall order for an organization to handle, and what we wanted to, again, identify is where we could improve relative to managing that infrastructure. I think another thing that's important to mention is that prior to the assessment, ITS, Phil DeBartlo, our chief information officer, had a number of ongoing activities already underway to improve CPS's cybersecurity posture, such as a open position for an information security engineer, a process to improve the identity access management tool. And what that tool effectively does is help us manage who has access to which system and whether or not that access is appropriate. Also updating our VPN or virtual private network, which allows us to have employees access our network off-site, essentially, if they're working at a different location, as well as other things such as training. When you look at the results of the cyber diagnostic, at the end of the day, we would expect that an organization of the size of CPS would have a more mature cybersecurity infrastructure in place. And you'll see on the next slide how we are ranking this. We are currently measured, we're currently measuring CPS at repeatable. We think that CPS, again, according to this maturity continuum, should aspire to a managed footprint. One thing that's important to note is, again, there are a number of ongoing activities by ITS or IT to move forward and improve our security posture. I think IT and senior management must continue to complete in-flight projects, as well as make sure that there's a strategy in place to adopt different practices and policy changes that are currently underway. Until that happens, we will have the ability to protect our IT infrastructure here. Granted, it's a somewhat diminished capability to do it. I also want to remind the board that a lot of organizations struggle with IT security and IT infrastructure maintenance. CPS is not unique in that regard. I just think that it's worthwhile for us to point out that there's always opportunity for improvement, and we're working with IT to make sure that they're on the right path in terms of what those recommendations for improvement are. The next slide here, still related to the cyber diagnostic assessment, gives you a sense of that maturity continuum. So across the top, what you'll see are numerous stages in that maturity continuum, from initial to repeatable, all the way to optimized. Again, internal audit recommends that overall CPS moves to the managed maturity level. It will take, again, some time to get there, and as you can see, looking at the different sort of domains that are there. When we measured ourselves, as highlighted by the tannish color there, that's where we would ideally expect most organizations to be. We feel that the green dots identify where CPS is at this point in time. We do feel that CPS should aspire, again, more towards that managed piece versus the defined piece, and it will take some time to get there. And you will move in, all of these domains will not move sort of in tandem, so you may, for example, with regard to human factors or training and the ability for employees to identify when there are cyber threats, when there are phishing attempts and different things, we may be able to mature that much faster, for example, than we can mature something related to business continuity and crisis management. So, again, this is something that IT is working towards, and, excuse me, we feel that they're on the path to make it there.
Andrel, before you move on, two things come to mind that you have indirectly indicated. Number one, what's the timeframe to go from where we are to where you're recommending? And two, while we're not there, while we may be adequate but not what we should be, what's the likelihood of something happening, and if so, what are our exposures? And lastly, this is sort of one of those paradoxes that you can't get around, since this is a public institution, and we're required to talk about things of this nature in a public meeting, even covered by the media, to the extent that someone had any interest in looking, trying to get into our system and getting confidential information, we just told them that we have some vulnerabilities, so you, some people might be encouraged to take advantage of that. There's no way I know to really get around that if we're going to have honest and open discussions, so.
Sure. To start with your first question, in terms of how long will it take us to mature overall, I would say that some pieces we could make relatively quick progress in a matter of a couple months to six months, in terms of things like employee training, bringing on a person that Phil is looking to bring onboard, again, as information security engineer. And I think that's an important point to make, is that right now, we are in a place where we need to get someone that has absolute and clear responsibility for cybersecurity and information protection here at CPS. Again, not saying that we don't have that process, that capability in place now, it will be stronger when you have a person focused exclusively on that. I think that, again, once that person's onboard, I think you'll see some rather quick improvements. I think overall, it could take anywhere between a year to three years for this to mature in whole, if you will. But again, I think a lot of that is factored on the way that we prioritize things, the way that we have the capability to actually get these things done, which sometimes can include funding. I think that we have a very strong and responsive ITS team here at CPS. I think that from some of the events that have happened in the past, they've responded very quickly. I think that from a exposure perspective, organizations always have exposure. I think that CPS is no different in that regard. But I do think that Phil and his team are constantly looking for those most prevalent exploits and trying to make sure that they address them.
Thank you.
So, in terms of key recommendations, there are just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight here. I think the most important thing that we haven't talked about is enhancing our training program requirements for staff and students, including acceptable use policies, how we classify data, and, again, how we look at improving our security policies and procedures going forward. Until this happens, again, we will have a diminished capacity, but, again, that doesn't mean we don't have any capacity at this point as well. The next thing I wanted to mention that isn't highlighted here, we are working with ITS to do what we call a network penetration assessment. And to your point earlier, President Clark, about individuals being able to, or tempted to want to try to exploit anything that may be possible here at CPS, again, we feel that we're making good progress to close any gaps that may be there, but this next activity will help us identify any gaps that may remain in terms of someone being able to hack us, so to speak, from the outside.
You know, my experience in the corporate world, and I'm talking very large Fortune 100 companies, when we sit at a board meeting and we hear this discussion, we're always reminded by the expert that talked to us that it's very difficult, in fact, no company can say that they're immune to cyber attacks. The real question is how quickly you can identify that you've been attacked and minimize the information that gets out.
Absolutely.
And I assume we're no, our situation would be no different.
Absolutely no different.
Yeah.
Moving on to another topic, completed activity, vendor payments and employee reimbursements. This was a analysis that internal audit performed, and I would really call this phase one. There is a second phase to this that we'll get to in just a moment. The goal here was to look at vendor and employee reimbursement data for FY '14, '15, and '16 to identify potential errors that may inform process changes and policy improvements. What I want to make sure that I make clear is that the items that we're going to talk about here are variant, to varying levels, indications of possible issues that we need to address from either a vendor management perspective or from a expenditure control perspective. Vendor management's an ongoing activity for any organization, it's really continuous. What we set out to do is identify ways that we could improve our vendor management process. Some of the things that we did identify along the way were 250 records, or records really are vendors in this case, with different addresses. Some of this could be something such as the vendor moved and their old address and new address are still in the system. We've seen things where there may be vendors with very similar addresses or the exact same address. And so what we're looking in phase two to do is to make sure that we go through and identify sort of the more prevalent issues versus something that might just be routine cleanup and closing out the inactive vendor versus the active vendor. The other thing that we've seen were, again, 270 vendor records where the same, they had the same telephone number but a different vendor ID, which you would think each vendor would have a rather unique telephone number. So, again, we're looking into identifying what may have caused those types of issues to happen. Moving on to expenditure controls, we were looking, again, to detect abnormalities that may have existed. We've identified 200 possible duplicate payments, and I want to make sure for this next item here that I make it very clear that this is not a clear issue. It's something that we think where it could be indicative of vendors breaking the spirit of procurement rules, if not the actual policy or law itself. Let me give a little bit of perspective. We have a process called a CPR, Chief Procurement Officer Request. It's essentially a mini-bid process. Once you hit $75,000 for that process, meaning the contract is $75,000 or more, it has to be presented to the board. When we looked at this type of activity, we wanted to see where there are different vendors that could potentially have contracts of $75,000 or more that haven't been presented to the board, and we did find roughly 140 vendors where that may have occurred. Again, absolutely nothing wrong with this activity from a policy perspective. What's happening is the vendor may take a $25,000 purchase order at three different locations or more than three different locations, and now they've aggregated contract revenue in excess of $75,000 without being presented to the board. So we want to continue to look at this to inform future policy, to see if the board does indeed want to make a change to the policy going forward. In terms of, excuse me, key recommendations, I think it's pretty clear in terms of what this is telling us. From a vendor management perspective, I think we need to improve our capability to continually monitor and identify these types of abnormalities that may happen, to either clean them up or address them if they are indeed an issue. I think from a expenditure perspective, I think we need to strengthen our management or internal controls that are in place. Again, not saying there's an absence of internal controls. There's always opportunity to improve, and these things are indicative of ways that we can improve our internal controls and policies.
If I understood what you were saying, Andrel, you don't see a lot of evidence where we have duplicate purchase orders from the same vendor in different locations that exceed the $75,000 threshold as something that's, that you don't seem to have hard indications that people are deliberately doing this to avoid bringing the contract to the board for approval.
Absolutely. There's nothing here that tells us that there's anything intentional or deliberate. I think that there is a, we looked at this more from a perceptual perspective and what could appear versus reality.
Father Garanzini, did you have?
No, I'd like to know more about this. I'll ask questions.
Mr. President.
Yes.
May I ask questions as well? Is this, I mean, an example of, one of the many examples of the decentralization of our financial system at CPS, and how are you addressing or recommending we address the ability to actually have transparency and the ability to bring best practices and compliance with policy and anti-fraud efforts to the financial structure of the district, given how decentralized it has been and some of the reforms that you've been part of?
Absolutely. I do believe that a reason that this exists is because of the decentralization that exists here at CPS. A vendor can, say, for rather common things such as student photography or different things, printing services, whatever it may be, accounting services, they can go from one school to another and, again, get a $25,000 contract, and it's very difficult at times to sort of aggregate that information together to see what's actually happening, and with the aggregate amount of contract revenue being driven by different vendors maybe at any point in time. So we are looking very closely at how can we, again, try to both provide better transparency, better visibility to these activities, and how do we, again, change policy? How do we centralize to some degree, move to strategic source vendors, not necessarily one vendor in all cases, but having, you know, fewer vendors that schools can select from? And when we do this as well, I think one thing that's important to note is that when you have this disaggregated spend across the district, we're losing our, the ability to leverage our buying power by pulling all of our dollars into single purchases or multiple purchases that benefit a broader range of schools. That's certainly something that's an indirect effect of this activity. The next item I'd like to talk about is absenteeism compliance. Over the last several weeks, internal audit has been performing a review of time off, sick day requests to determine, again, compliance with CPS policy. During our analysis, we noted a number of things, and one thing is that employees tend to be absent on certain days of the week, such as Mondays or Fridays. We also see sick day usage going up on, in parallel with certain events, certain what we call holidays or what we call special days. And so, for example, the day after the Super Bowl, which also happened to be a Monday, we've seen historically higher numbers of sick days taken. We've seen the same activity happen for Valentine's Day, day after Valentine's Day. It didn't have such an impact this year because of the day in which Valentine's Day occurred. When you see Valentine's Day, for example, occurring on a Friday or a Monday, you see higher occurrences of sick days. You look at the chart in front of you and look at March 17th, for example, which also was St. Patrick's Day and the start of the NCAA tournament. Ironically, we had an unusually high number of sick days taken. We are talking here about sick days taken by teachers, and we focused on that, on this population, because we have data that's, the best available data for us right now is related to teachers. Additionally, they're the biggest population of employees here at CPS, and they have the biggest impact to CPS achieving its objectives and driving educational improvement. We will expand, and we are expanding this effort right now to include other employees. We started focusing here to start. One thing in terms of the impact of teacher sick days directly from a financial perspective is the fact that we have to cover the substitute cost for that teacher when he or she is absent. And for the days that you see here, these four days alone, we estimate that the substitute teacher cost was $410,000, again, for these four days alone. This is in addition to sick day hours that are paid to employees who have called in sick, who, again, would have otherwise received their normal day of salary.
What's the, I'm asking this not already knowing the answer, but I'd like to hear it. What's the policy around sick days? This is always an issue in my previous responsibilities. It was clear to me that most employees, including management, viewed sick days as an entitlement and were used, sick or not. What's our policy here?
Yeah, I think our policy is pretty clear. Our policy states that you can't, again, take a sick day if you're sick, if you have the flu, if you have family members. We have a rather broad grouping of family members that are covered under the sick day policy. For example, if your grandmother is sick and you're acting as a caregiver for your grandmother, you need to take your grandmother to the doctor, that's, or your spouse, that's completely allowable. So, again, I think our policy has been there, it's been clear, and I think is relatively unchanged. I think there have been some things from a collective bargaining agreement over the years that have perhaps changed incentives in terms of prior, for example, you could bank sick days and be paid out at a later date now for teachers, for example. I believe it's 10 sick days that you have, and so there's a use it or lose it policy in place, and I think that has certainly influenced activity and culture around the use of sick days. I do think that there is a sense that these are my days and that I will take those days when I feel that it's appropriate for me to take them, and almost without explanation.
Are there personal business days?
There are personal business days.
And what, how is, how are the, what's the parameters of those?
So the parameters around personal business days are fairly generic to the title, that if there's something that you need to take a day off for, to attend to, again, personal affairs, you can do that, so.
And substitutes are given for those days as well?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. To continue.
Before you go on, Dr. Jackson, do you have any insight to add to this?
No, I think Andrel's about to go into a slide that I, you know, found compelling when I was reviewing this ahead of time, and I'll just say, you know, from a principal and network chief perspective, this was something that I monitored closely, not just to be a stickler, but really, if you think about it, if teachers, principals, or any school-based or any employees, but in particular, school-based employees use all of those days, you are talking about three weeks of instruction that students miss out on. If you are not in school, if you're not in front of a certified teacher for three days, I firmly believe that that has an impact on the growth that the students will make from year to year. And so it's definitely about stopping fraud and ensuring that people follow the policy, but I also think there's a strong case to be made for the educational impact of not having your teacher in front of you for three weeks throughout the year.
CEO Claypool, is there a number that, other than the $400,000 number you already used, if we annualize this, what do we think this actual cost is, to where it's not legitimate sick days and not business days that we've authorized?
I don't know if we have enough data at this point to say that. I don't know, Andrel, if you have an opinion.
I agree. I think that we can have a number fairly soon, but I don't have a number that I can speak to with certainty at this point in time.
What would be a range? Are we talking more hundreds of thousands, or are we talking millions?
I would say we're certainly talking millions. If I had to put an estimate on it, I'll put a broad estimate on it. I would say that number could be anywhere between $7 to $15 million on an annualized basis.
Okay. It's an area that deserves our attention.
Absolutely, absolutely. Continuing the conversation around absenteeism compliance, what I want to talk about are, again, advanced schedule sick days. And, again, these align to the days that we talked about earlier. For the first three days, we sent letters to approximately 250 employees, asking them what was the purpose of that particular sick day. And what you have here are highlights of what was provided in response. 57% provided a doctor's note, 25% provided an employee's statement, and what that statement generally would entail would be the rationale, why did I take this day? You know, I took my daughter to the doctor, I took my, I stayed home with my sick husband, I stayed home with my sick daughter, for example, things of that nature. And then there's 14% with no response. And, again, we're continuing to follow up on these responses, just to make sure that we understand why we saw, particularly on those two days, abnormally high sick days. Another thing that I want to highlight is that we are, on a continual basis, monitoring the reasons stated for sick days. So we have a system in place here where substitutes are requested in advance, and we would prefer that substitutes are requested when you are taking a pre-planned sick day. And there's nothing wrong with taking a pre-planned sick day if you are attending a doctor's appointment or series of doctor's appointments, or, again, caring for someone that's covered under the policy, that's completely allowable. In this same system, employees will put reasons in there as to why they're taking the sick day, and this gets to the comments that we had earlier about the culture around sick days being days that I am. being days that I am sort of, they're, they're my days and I can take them at, at my pleasure. Some of the reasons given in the system, again, why a teacher requested a sick day. I have a wedding in Atlanta. One, very clearly, if I don't use it, I will lose it. You had another person sit there getting married in Vegas, a person that said, I will be out of town. My son or daughter has an extracurricular event, I'm out of personal business days. So again, there's a varying level of, or varied reasons why this will happen. And also it tells you the fact that we have clear transparency into these reasons, I think it gives you a sense of the mindset that's out there, that these are days that really are not connected for some employees to me being sick or someone being sick.
It occurs to me that clarity around this is really important because we're making these statements in an open meeting. We have no objection, take no issue with our employees, many of whom are mothers, that are taking sick days for their, they're sick, or taking sick days to take care of their family, or taking sick days to do special things related to their family. We have no issue with people who arrange a predetermined, what did you, what did you refer, a business day?
Yes.
How many of those do we give?
I believe three.
Three.
We're not taking issue with any of that. We're taking the issue with that slice that falls under the, you know, the day after Thanksgiving, the day after, the holidays.
Absolutely.
What's the single biggest day that we actually see that, you know, makes us concerned?
Over the last three years, the single biggest day has been the Friday before Memorial Day. So, and again, the other days that we've seen are the day after Super Bowl, depending on the timing, again, Valentine's Day has been a, a big day. We've also seen a higher numbers of sick days taken during certain school events such as a personal development day, for example. One last thing to talk about related to the monitoring of reasons stated for sick days. We send emails out to these employees when we see a reason that we feel is not compliant with policy. And we're continuing to do that. At this point in time, we had, I believe this was as of April 12th, we had sent somewhere around 100 letters. One thing that's important to notice, that one-third of those employees, in response to the email that we sent, changed their sick day to another code such as a personal business day, or even took a excused absence without pay or a so-called zero day. So again, President Clark, to your point, this is about absenteeism compliance and we have absolutely no issue as an organization with taking sick days per policy. This is really a policy compliance activity and we'll continue to monitor going forward. And we will also look to apply discipline as appropriate going forward with these employees.
Are there other exceptional days like funeral days and death and family? And are there other days that are included in your data?
So yes, you, you have bereavement days that, that you may take as well. There, there are a range of different days. I think the most popular or common ones are, again, your personal business day, the sick day, the bereavement day.
Andrel, the issue is using the right day for the right reason, for the right purpose, right?
Absolutely.
And this around the sick day is that people are using sick days when they're not sick or they're not caring for an immediate family member, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Moving on to school audits and to close out soon and transition over to the finance portion of the meeting. To date, we've completed 18 district-run school audits. The volume is lower than last year due to a number of factors, fairly intentional factors. We expanded the audit scope as we talked about in prior audit committee meetings to include a much broader scope of activities. So our audit visits, we intended to go down, but we would have what I would call more meaningful, more consolidated audits occurring at schools. And, and that's identified with the graphic below. When you look at the blue area, again, prior year scope areas, and then we've added a number of different things, looking at transactions and policies and issues, internal controls around athletics, grant compliance, hiring, safety and security, SQRP data, et cetera. So again, we intentionally lowered the number of audits, but again, we're going to have a broader footprint of what we look at from an audit perspective. We're also doing desk audits so that we can audit more transactions without even leaving the desk, so to speak, and that allows us to have, again, broader audit coverage. We also had a later start time just due to organizational initiatives and priorities. The one thing that I think is important to talk about when you think about school audits, and we've had this conversation before, but I want to connect it to a significant changes happening with the organization. The school audits and other related audits have told us that there is a need to look at how do we structurally make some changes to how schools operate from a financial and accounting perspective? How do we improve that governance? How do we improve those controls? And again, this has been reinforced by recurring audit findings. We need to improve process consistency and we have a 500-plus district-run schools that are out there with varying levels of sophistication. And I think it's very difficult to have a consistent level of financial capacity spread across those 500 schools. To give you a sense of some of the issues that we've seen over the years, if you were to look at, for example, last year, we did 170 school audits. Seventy-five percent of those schools that we audited had payroll-related issues, 80% had employee reimbursement issues, 70% had monthly reconciliation-related issues. We've seen through related audits, 25 employees with time abuse, time falsification issues. Again, these things included things such as lack of approval of goods and services prior to purchase, lack of supporting documentation, and additionally segregation of issues, segregation of duties issues that are present at schools. And segregation of duties, what that means is that you ideally want to have enough people in the process to create a control infrastructure. You don't want one person controlling the full transaction. You want to put different people in that process to create control. And for example, a person that receives cash and takes in cash should not be the same person as reconciling your bank account. And it's very difficult at times to have those types of segregation duty controls present in schools. When you look at the volume of things that are happening at schools, we see nearly a million manual payroll edits per year. And what that means is that someone's time is off and we need to go into our payroll system to correct that time, otherwise that employee's going to have some type of pay deviation or short pay. We see 38,000 expense reimbursements per year, 70,000 budget transfers, and 6,000 bank account reconciliations, as well as $92 million in what we call off-contract spend. This is setting, I think, the stage and begging to question, how do we look at this structurally and from an organizational perspective to put, again, better governance, better process consistency in place? And how do we support our schools better from a financial perspective?
What this raises in my mind, and I'm sure is true, of other board members, while I think we all support principal autonomy, I think we see a lot of benefits there. There are certain back office services that just simply lend themselves by their very nature to more centralization, to drive efficiency, scale, et cetera. The 92 million in off-contracts, again, because we're in a public forum, I want to make sure we're clear that the off, the, we're not talking about things that are fraudulent, we're not, just explain that a little bit.
Yes. What I mean by off-contract spend is where we may have a board contract in place that a lot of schools can use, a strategic source vending contract that a lot of schools could use. Those contracts are out there for the purpose of us making the purchase process much quicker, much more efficient. You don't have to go out and seek your own vendor, you don't have to go through the entire vendor onboarding process. You can basically go buy your office supplies from this entity. You can get your printing needs served by this entity. Off-contract basically means that they're not leveraging those contracts to make those purchases. And again, appropriate purchases, get, this gets back to a conversation or comment that I had earlier, that we are not able to leverage our buying power better to drive price savings and volume, through purchase volume across the schools. So if, if we could get even half of that 92 million on contract, you know, we could save anywhere between 15% to 20% of those purchases. And again, we make more dollars available to schools, to principals, to the district by doing that.
Dr. Jackson, thinking about this issue from the principal's perspective, and, and this, this real, I think, need and desire to make sure that at the local levels, principals have the autonomy and controls they need to, to be effective in their schools. You know, how do we reconcile the two?
I think by what we've been doing, engaging principals in the process, there are definitely more opportunities to save, you know, using, you know, contracts and buying, and using, buying in bulk. But I also think there are always a handful of things, and we've talked about that, you know, local things that the school has to purchase where that may not be feasible. The biggest spend that comes to mind is the cost for prom, graduation, and all of those things. You know, a lot of that spend that's, that's highlighted falls in that category. But I think we've done a really good job with, you know, some of the other large items like textbooks, printing, and other large line items for school spend. But again, I think Andrel's team has been doing a really good job listening to principals and balancing that so that we don't go too far where principals' hands are cuffed.
So to close out this section here, I, I think to, and also set up the financial presentation to help address these issues, to Janice's point, my team in procurement and finance, a lot of us have been out talking with schools, trying to make sure that we, A, listen and understand what challenges they are facing and figure out ways to, again, address those challenges, ways to create more structure and capacity and centralize certain transactions as, as necessary to, to the point of looking at a principal and what they're focused on is driving academic achievement. If there is a way that we can take these back office transactions and centralize them, leverage our size, and provide them and their staff with more time to focus on school administration, that's a goal. And, and that's what the expansion of the School Support Center is really focused on at this point in time. And to move into the financial portion and continue that discussion, I'll turn it over to Ron Denard and Jenny Bennett. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. My name's Jenny Huang Bennett. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. I'm here to talk about two items. One is to expand upon the discussion that, that Andrel just talked about related to the School Support Center and the expansion of some of the procedures and activities at the school level, and then also to talk about an update of the state of funding at the state and some, some of the developments there. So as it relates to the School Support Center, Andrel talked a lot about the reasons why we've expanded the SSC. Through the internal audit process, we've identified certain transactions that are repetitive and, and finding a way to be able to create more consistency and best practices at this, at the school level and centrally at central office to be able to create efficiencies there. The revamped SSC has been working with principals throughout the year to remove some of these transactions from daily operations and create better internal controls. Some of those transactions include budget transfers, book transfers, monthly reconciliations, which are in essence the reconciliation of cash and financials at the schools, employee and school reimbursements, and timekeeping and support. In particular, through the SSC, we've seen significant improvements in these internal controls, including the timely completion of monthly reconciliations and more accurate timekeeping for employees, ensuring that the employees receive more accurate paychecks over time. And then as a part of the SSC expansion, we've also incorporated a district-wide rollout of Chrono self-service where employees will now enter their time in an online portal.
I'm sorry, going back to the paychecks, is the assumption that where we've had problems, we are underpaying people? Or is it overpay and underpay?
So part of the issue is that because there's a lag in terms of the process and with Chrono self-service, we'll start to improve the timeliness, timeliness of payroll and timekeeping. But because of the lag, there have been a number of manual edits that have occurred post to the payroll period so that people are in essence getting shorter their paycheck or getting paid inaccurate pay. And so as a result of this, because we are creating centralized practices for how it is that we process payroll and creating a better way to do that in a, on, on an ongoing basis, the pay is more timely and also more accurate.
Are these edits taking place locally? Are they being, I mean, what's driving this problem?
So currently, they're being, they're taking place locally and we're centralizing a lot of the work associated with that.
I guess what I'm asking you, these, these are errors. Something, some data is wrong.
Right.
Is that at the, does, is that actually taking place in the school, the clerks?
So it's taking place at the schools and for the most part, a lot of the clerks are doing some of that work. A lot of it is due to, for example, missed swipes or alternatively benefit time that's being used that, that an employee may not have accrued. And so part of the benefit of, of Chrono self-service is that when you go in, it's online. If you miss a day or miss a swipe, you can do it from any internet connection. You can do it on the go as opposed to having to fill out a paper form, file that paper form, have that form take time to process. You can do it immediately. And it's also directly connected to Chrono so that then your actual times are known when, when it is that you log those times in. Some of the issues that we have are people may submit for time that they may not have accrued. If you, if you apply for a sick day, but you don't have a sick day or a vacation day and you don't have a vacation day, that creates some of the manual edits that have occurred, which then creates the inaccurate payroll.
And where does the manual edit take place? Does that take place at the school? Does that place, take place in central office?
Currently, it takes place at the schools. As we roll out employee self-service, it'll take place in central office. And I should say, in terms of the, in terms of manual edits, in terms of the actual submitting of the time, employees going forward will be responsible for submitting their time online.
This is a loaded question, but it's, it's hard not to ask. If you were, if you take any typical school or if there's a way to say on average, are we, by the sheer volume of these manual edits, almost a million of them, as I recall Andrel making reference to, is this an accuracy rate of 90%? You know what I'm asking, is it an accuracy rate of 95% or something really dramatically lower?
So in terms, I mean, we have a lot of employees and there's a lot of pay that happens on a, every two weeks. You know, I, I would say it's still a fairly accurate rate of pay, but regardless, there are a lot of manual edits. And so, you know, what we are trying to do is to drive more accuracy of payroll and just a better option for employees to be able to get their paid, paid accurately.
Is this a training issue with our clerks? What causes this?
You know, I think some of it is really just, you know, over time, processes have changed and making sure everybody's updated with the latest process. But I think a lot of it now also is really more about the rationale of creating a better process for some of the more repetitive tasks that occur and a more centralized process, which then if we're doing that centrally, we can control.
President Clark, can I add a little color to there? So the issue is, so there's, there's two issues when it comes to payroll. There is timekeeping issues so that me as an individual, I don't submit the right time. So that's most of our manual edits. It's not necessarily that the clerk does something wrong. The clerk is actually correcting the edit. So there were, there's some individual issues, there were some system issues that we are improving that will help clean that up. For instance, if you don't have your swipe card and then you decide to key in your employee ID and you key in the wrong ID, now you don't get paid and you also have thrown off the wrong employee's ID that you, you know, that you put in. So that's a timekeeping issue. Then the last piece is how well does the payroll department operate? So the payroll department is like a factory. When, when the time comes in, whatever the time comes in, they're supposed to make sure that that gets out accurately. So we don't, we have less problems with the payroll department and most of our problems were on the front end of how people are putting in their time. And that happens in a lot of areas when you're non-salaried and, and every hour and how you classify the hour counts.
So just to clarify this, it's not issues, I asked about training our clerks, it's not issues with clerks making mistakes, it's issues with clerks having to correct mistakes that were already made.
And employees, training people and... And employees, training people, and having the system to help show, you're having the system online that can show you that you didn't put in 40 hours or you didn't have the sick, you know, the sick pay. So it's, so the training is really at the employee level more than even at the clerk level.
Is there some sort of approval process through employee self-service that resides in the school or is that centralized as well?
So employee self-service, there is an approval process. So once you enter your time, your manager has to approve that time as well.
Including the edit?
In concluding, yes, that's correct. So, you know, it's twofold. Part of it is, as we've gone through and looked at, you know, the internal audits at the schools, improving efficiencies, creating processes for not just payroll, not just self-service for Chronos, but also book transfers, budget transfers, employee reimbursements, school reimbursements, all of the various activities that occur that are process-oriented at the schools. Creating a centralized way to do that helps us to be able to create more controls around hundreds of millions of dollars of spending and also create just more consistency of how it is that those processes are affected. We have provided training opportunities to staff and principals for employee self-service, and it just, the transactions take just a few minutes to complete. I mentioned that they are available online via any internet connection, so it actually is a lot more, a lot more accessible than the current process for amending payroll. And to date, we've provided financial and accounting support for over 300 schools and expect to have the entire district fully implemented by the end of the school year. The next update that we like to provide relates to the state of state funding for CPS. As I'm sure you're aware, this Friday, we expect to have a judgment on our civil rights lawsuit, which ties very closely to how it is that we're funded by the state. The page 14 here highlights some of the educational accomplishments, many of which you know. This is the good news, which is that at this point in 2016, we have all-time records in graduation rate at 74 percent. Freshman on track rate to graduate is 87 percent. We have half of the dropout rate as compared to five years ago. Excellence in reading and math, ACT scores, as well as a billion dollars in college scholarships in 2016.
The ACT scores, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Jackson, is that the 82-point, I mean, the AT-82, is that the 18.2?
I think it's 18.4.
And that incremental increase that CPS raised the average for the entire state, but for that, the state actually would have dropped?
Would have dropped slightly.
Would you state that very clearly?
Yes.
So any reporters here will get that?
I think it's been reported and covered on, but we're happy to share again that CPS continued to improve its performance on the ACT despite some stagnation throughout the state and even slight dips. Because we have so many students, we actually carry the state's average. And to President Clark's point, had CPS students not done so well, we would have seen a slight dip in the state average for the ACT this past school year.
And one thing that did also just recently come out, U.S. News and World Report notes that we have some of the top high schools in the state as well as the country. So that's the good news. Despite all of that, and those educational accomplishments have occurred in despite of the state funding and our current financial crisis. The chart that's shown on this page highlights where the state has funded the rest of the school districts of the state, which is what the green line demonstrates as compared to CPS. What you can see is that the funding for all other school districts in the green line has gone up while CPS funding has remained stagnant, if not declined, by about 2 percent. And this is in particularly disparate because of the fact that CPS students are 90 percent minority, whereas the students of the rest of the state are largely in majority.
Can I stop you for a moment? CEO Claypool, I've heard you address this issue, but again, it's worth pointing out. When you see this on a chart, it's so stunning, it just takes your breath away. What's your, is there an explanation for this that makes any sense at all to justify this incredible difference?
Well, first of all, what's important about this slide is it shows you that this crisis is seven years in the making. This is not, this is not something that goes back decades. This is, this began roughly seven years ago when the state began, while it was cutting funding for CPS, actual cuts in our funding each year to CPS because of the state's own budget issues. At the same time, they were funneling billions more to suburban and downstate schools in the form of teacher pension subsidies. And in fact, as our court case points out, in the mid-'90s, the state was paying our pensions at the same prorata rate as the other districts in the state. And then gradually, the state just continued to give us less and less and everyone else more and more so that we went from between 20 and 22 percent of the total state pension allocations, if I remember my numbers right, down to 0.3 today. Conversely, the state's share of the other districts' pension obligations went from 86 percent to 99.6 or something like that, more than 99 percent. So, and then particularly, that disparity began growing even more rapidly in fiscal year 12, as you can see. At that point back in fiscal year 12, if you're looking at total funding, including pension subsidies, poverty grants, general state aid, we were roughly in harmony with our peers. But as you can see how radically the disparity has grown since then, and it will continue to grow at a very fast pace in the absence of an end to this racially discriminatory system that CFO Bennett just addressed.
Just one more question for us. One of the justifications that I've heard from time to time, we all have, is the state will make reference to the funding we get for block grants, saying that sort of offsets the pension contribution. I know that is not the case, but could you address that clearly for us here?
Yes, it does not even come close to addressing the disparity. And that's why in the, in the civil rights case that Council Marmer and our outside counsel Jenner and Block have filed, we make that very clear. We're going apples to apples, pairs to pairs, all-in funding, and we put it all in, including those block grants. There's still a radical disparity there. So that was an important point, and the state has not contested those facts.
And lastly, if you put a dollar value, again, I know the answer, I just want you to say it, if you put a dollar value on this gap, how much would it be to date?
There's two, let me answer that, there's two ways to look at it. If you look at it simply as our enrollment matching the percentage of state funding, it's $500 million a year. If we were treated like every other school district and our pensions were picked up, it would be $721 million a year.
And are we prepared to say how that relates to our current cash deficit?
Well, I mean, I could let CFO, I mean, Senior Vice President of Finance, Ron Denard, answer that. I think there's a, there's a very clear correlation, and I, I don't know if counsel wants to opine on this, but in the brief, we note that there's almost a perfect correlation between the amount of monies in our cash deficit in recent years matched against the amount that we've been shorted through racially discriminatory funding. So there's almost a, is it fair to say, almost a dollar-for-dollar match?
1.1.
1.1 billion match.
Thank you.
So, you know, just to add to that, the state hasn't disputed in the lawsuit any of the financial facts of the case and the financial facts that you see here. You know, basically, what they've argued is that they are, have immunity to the Civil Rights Act that we've sued them under. Just to kind of add to what Forrest mentioned, CPS is the only school district that funds its own pension payment. The state pays $2,400 per student for every other student in the state and currently pays $32 per student for CPS, and that's largely because we are, we do fund our own pension payment as opposed to...
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you. I don't know if our general counsel feels appropriate to respond to that, but the lawsuit, which we'll get some kind of a ruling, well, we'll get a ruling on Fridays. Is it safe to say that the summation of the state's position is that we just, they don't argue the equity, they don't argue the calculations, the disparity? They simply say that the Chicago Board of Education hasn't got standing to sue the state? And, you know, so it's a technical argument?
The state's arguments boil down to really three categories, Mr. President. The first is an argument that if you look at funding, you shouldn't consider pensions as part of education funding. That's a sort of a remarkable suggestion because in virtually every school district across the state and the nation, pension funding is obviously part of teacher compensation, and teacher compensation is overwhelmingly a huge portion of every school district's budget. So that suggestion is artificial, and the state has gone beyond that to seek to talk about certain buckets of extra funding that they want to count and ignore others. They do not dispute that if you take all of the money together, including the pension funding, the numbers are what we have described with a shortfall this year alone of approximately $500 million. The state's second arguments boil down to a combination of these more technical legal arguments. Some of them are standing, some of them have to do with immunity, in which they argue in a nutshell that the Illinois Civil Rights Act applies and can police activities within government but not at the state level. And so the state has argued, if we, the state, pass a statute that has a disparate impact, there's nothing the Illinois Civil Rights Act can do about that. It might be able to do something if Chicago does it or if some administrative agency does it, but if the legislature passes and the governor signs a statute with a disparate impact, you're out of luck under the Illinois Civil Rights Act. We take strong exception to that, and I won't revisit all of our arguments here, but that's essentially the second argument. And then their third argument is essentially telling the court to mind its own business, arguing that these are really political questions, they ought to be worked out in Springfield, and whether there is disparate impact or not is not something that the court should concern itself with. Of course, historically, it is the courts that have had a unique position in protecting the rights of minorities. It's precisely because minorities often are left out and cheated by the political process that the courts are called upon to protect them. And the Illinois Civil Rights Act, which was passed by Illinois in response to a restrictive decision by the United States Supreme Court, is absolutely empowering the courts to act.
Thank you for that concise and clear explanation. I've been subtly told that I'm taking up too much time. So I need you to wrap up so we can get to public participation.
So the next few pages reiterates what we've just talked about. The funding gap is expected to persist and continue. CPS will continue to have increasing pension fund payments with minimal funding from the state. And then the state continues to increase its pension funding to other school districts, expected to be by about a billion dollars by, more than 2017 by 2021. We had our $215 million that was vetoed. We've made some mid-year cuts, so we still have a remaining budget gap to address. And, you know, we've talked at length about the lawsuit and the fact that we deserve equal funding.
Board members, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's go to public participation. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:30 this morning. Individuals who registered to speak will have two minutes to comment, and it will call speakers in the order of registration. When called, please state your name. I will proceed by calling the first speaker. And, Mr. President, we do have three individuals that registered this morning. Our first speaker is Speaker Pav, I'm sorry, Pavlyn Jankov, followed by Jackson Potter, and then we'll have Joy Clendenning.
I have some paper for the board, if I could mess it out. So I have two issues that I wanted to address to the board. The first issue concerns Central Office spending. I know that the district has threatened to cut two weeks of school and even slash the $5 million budget for K- to A summer school. There has been some coverage of the Central Office maneuverings, you know, the cuts, the additions that we see in every single administration. I've tried to get a handle on this spending, and I want to draw your attention to the fact that across several of the core central administration offices that deal with Central Office work, not stuff that the Central Office does on behalf of schools across the district, there's actually been an increase of $10 million since the current CEO took office. One stand out is the new finance office. Specifically, there's about $5 million of spending, new spending, in an item called "services professional," which refers to consultants. And in your budget report, you refer to that being related to new investments in analytical reporting, financial processing, and shared services. I'd like to know what kind of reporting, processing, and services these are related to. Are they related to the district's financial situation? Because the answer to the district's financial situation is revenue. It's been revenue, will continue to be revenue, and you don't need to cut $5 million from summer school in order to finance additional consultants for the finance office in order to figure that out. We've come to the board, many community members have come to the board to talk about revenue, talk about local progressive revenue options available to the district, and we ask that you consider those. In addition, there's another item that recently passed City Council. It is the $50 million appropriation for TIF funding for the South Loop school. I'd like to ask the board whether they've considered alternatives to spending $50 million in the South Loop when there are, according to the board, several schools with less than efficient utilization, both in the slightly north and slightly to the south sides. This board has had no problems going over community demands against the school closings, in instance, in 2013.
Thank you for your comments.
Why is the board pursuing this?
Let him finish, but wrap it up for us, okay?
Yeah, so I'd like to ask the board why it is that they've taken the task of building a school in the South Loop, which seems pretty unnecessary with such, you know, heart and immediacy in this current situation. We just heard this presentation about disparate funding, disparate impact from the state. What is the board's position in the fact that they have an option to not continue and maintain segregation, not continue and maintain unequal funding within their own school district as it relates to building facilities, and the fact that you have this huge disparity between closures, which is what you've reserved for certain communities, and new buildings, which is what you've reserved for this specific community in the South Loop? Does the board have a position on that?
Are you complete?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jankov. Our next speaker, please, Jackson Potter.
How's everybody? My name's Jackson. I'm the staff coordinator at the CTU. I think as a result of this hearing this morning, there's kind of a stunned quality that there's an absence of a plan looming over us should the lawsuit not be successful, and what is going to happen to the hundreds and thousands of students, parents, and teachers awaiting news on whether school will be open June 1st. I think not, no pun intended, that we're missing the forest from the trees. I'll use a poker game analogy. When you have, let's say you're all playing a poker game, the board, and that you have a relationship with the dealer, the mayor, but you fold your cards before wager made or the cards are flopped. And because of a bluff, that being the lawsuit, that is stated to solve all your problems, you decide not to see what your hand is made of. I think your hand is better than that. CEO Claypool and the board, you've issued a statement that's historic stating, "A TIF surplus is in your ongoing plans for school budgets for the foreseeable future to address state budget impasse." You have an obligation to call this bluff and raise the stakes by asking the mayor what additional funds are available to avoid the catastrophe of closing schools early should the lawsuit not be successful. Those options exist currently. So will you ask the mayor to support the Cardenas Garza ordinance, which would allow the vast majority of TIF dollars to return to the schools? He can make a surplus declaration tomorrow. We know from tax receipts, the booming housing market that is now on the path to recovery, that TIF surplus is possible. So have you asked those questions? Have you asked how much exists in those accounts? You could ask the Carlos Rosa corporate head tax to be restored. That would put $100 million into your coffers. Where is the advocacy for the children that should the lawsuit not be successful, that you have the power and obligation to put forward? And then, you know, the audits, looking for savings, where possible, efficiencies, addressing fraud. I'll wrap up. Makes sense, but where's the six-figure suit audit? You know, what Pavlyn mentioned, we have double the administrative costs under this CEO. Those are necessary to look at, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. And our last speaker, please, Joy Clendenning. Last call. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Board members, do you have any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion to adjourn.
Yes.
It's been moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.